Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, Tuesday, January 23, 2018. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
President.
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
President.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here, thank you. Moving on to the invocation, Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. First, I would like to take the time to thank everyone for coming. If we could all take the time for a moment of silence to commemorate the life of Deputy U.S. Marshal Christopher David Hill, who lost his life while serving an arrest warrant in the city of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you.
A memorial service will be held to celebrate his life this Thursday at 1 PM at the Hershey Giant Center. I encourage all who are able to make it to come and show your respects. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Moving on to Pledge of Allegiance, Councilman Maslin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're certainly having technical difficulties, so tonight we will not be taping this legislative session, but we will be recording, so you will be on record, but we will not be on television for this session. Oh, it's not live. That's what I meant, it's not live on television. Okay, moving on to communication, recognition of Matango's Quality Candies, Councilman Majors.
Thank you, President Williams. Just wanted to take a moment to recognize a longstanding business in the community of the city of Harrisburg. It's Matango's Candies, located on 15th and Catherine Street. They are entering, they just concluded their 70th year of business operating in the city of Harrisburg in Allison Hill neighborhood. It was started by Christoph Rose, Pop's Matango, and he's, his legacy has gone on for three generations and is being currently continued by his grandson, Peter. We prepared a proclamation to present to them. Unfortunately, Peter's a little bit busy making treats and taking care of his, his mother to be able to attend this evening, but on behalf of City Council in the city of Harrisburg, we just thank the Matango's family for operating in, within the city of Harrisburg for over 70, 70 years and providing treats to the world over, especially their Venetian mints, which are delicious. So I would encourage all residents to come on, come on over and spend some time and visit with a, a family who's been dedicated to the city of Harrisburg for 70 years and to the Allison Hill community. So myself, well, I'll make sure that that proclamation gets presented to the family, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Thank you, Mr. Majors, and congratulations to Matango's Quality Candies, certainly our good candies. I made a mistake, we're still taping, but we're not live at this point, but we will be taping and it will be on TV. I'm sorry, misunderstood. We're moving on to communications, update on Harrisburg Peace Promenade, and please adhere to the five minutes. Mr. Sloan.
Yes.
We will hear from, after Mr. Sloan.
From the mic.
Yes, sir, yes.
You covered me.
Yes, yes.
We will first hear from Mr. Sloan, then we will hear from Ruby Dobbs, Peggy Grove, Jeff Stewart, and Kate Schachler on behalf of her mother. Mr. Sloan?
Yes, Kate, would you join us over here? Good evening, Madam Chairman, our good council members, Mr. Mayor and staff. Over 25 years ago, the International Institute for Peace Through Tourism, a project of UNESCO, was founded. Since its 25 years, it has become its own individual organization on all seven continents and in 200 countries. This year, they established a Year of Global Peace Parks, asking for a national and international movement of local placemaking. Harrisburg's project was accepted to designate Riverfront Park from Market Street to Division as a global peace park in common ground, and we are here tonight, first to invite the council to join us on February 22 from 5 to 7 PM, for the council and the mayor to join us at the Hilton Hotel, when Dr. Louis de Lamour, the dynamic founder of the International Institute for Peace Through Tourism, will come to Harrisburg to formally install Harrisburg's Global Peace Park at the Riverfront Park. In addition to that evening, we are to establish exemplars of peace, and Ms. Peggy Grove is here to speak about the exemplars of peace.
We have several exemplars, and if you hold on a second, let me get to my, I had, he just sent me, Lynnwood just sent me an email moments ago, and I had to read that to be up to date on things. One moment. Sorry about this. Anyway, you know what, I have my work, just do it this way, don't waste time. All right, to begin with, thank you all for inviting us. I'm not going to list all the people that Lynnwood did again, but especially thank you for the mayor for being here and council members for receiving us this evening. We have Dr. John Judson, who many of you may know, has done hundreds of missions to Haiti as well as around the world as Physicians for Social Responsibility and Doctors Without Borders. He has been recognized worldwide, and he is our very own, he's a Rotarian for the Harrisburg Rotary, and has done so many things, it's impossible to list them all. His wife, Anne Marie Judson, is one of the people who spearheaded the Candles on the Water that is held in the Hiroshima anniversary each year, August 5, and they put biodegradable candles on the water, and there's a ceremony. The two of them will have one tree representing the two of their contributions. In addition to their contributions to the community, they, as well as the Laramens, Gwen and David Laramen, and the Physicians for Social Responsibility, especially Anne Marie Judson, have been responsible for the Peace Garden that is in the north side of Harrisburg up near the Governor's Mansion, where they have the Hiroshima representation, the Seven Generations, and then there's a peace pole that Anne Marie was specifically responsible for. In addition to them, Janine, Judge Janine Turgeon, who is a judge for Commonwealth Court in, not Commonwealth Court, but Dolphin County Court, and she does family and children's law, the families that she has helped keep together and the children that she has helped to have as good a life as possible are renowned in the area. She did work for Kaylee Roy Ervis as one of his law clerks, and he is also being, one of, he's also going to be one of the exemplars. In addition, we have Dr. Love, who was a humanitarian, a teacher in this area. Many things have been named for him in the Harrisburg area, and his wife will be accepting in his absence because he passed away in the last year and a half. And I'm trying to do this quickly, these people are just so wonderful, every single one of them, that I could say, I could go on all night, so I'm, please, by my giving less time to each one of them, please know that we, the information will be available in the Harrisburg Magazine, in the Berg, et cetera. You'll have an opportunity to read in more detail about each one of them. And Rabbi Ron Muroff from the Hezekamuna Community, he is the rabbi, the main rabbi for Hezekamuna. It is the newest synagogue rebuilt in the city of Harrisburg. As many of you know, there was a fire from the candles from Passover, or not from Passover, from Hanukkah several years ago, and it was rebuilt by Reynolds Company, that is a local construction company that did a respectful and a wonderful job. If you haven't seen the synagogue, it is, most of the people here in this room have because it is both the mayor's and my precinct. A few years ago, the precinct that was for the 14th Ward in the city of Harrisburg failed to disrepair and did not have adequate heat or bathroom facilities, and I requested of Dr., pardon me, of Rabbi Muroff, and he welcomed us with open arms, and the only problem was that the food had to be kosher, and so they provide the food for all the pole workers there so that there is no concern about rabbinical food laws. Who am I missing? Oh, the.
Mo'ham.
Mo'ham from, from the.
On the side of back.
From, from, from our Muslim community, and they are in the old Lakeside Lutheran Church, their, their mosque is, is now located at Green and Division Street in Harrisburg. They offer lots of community opportunities for, especially for women and children in the Harrisburg area, and it is open to all religions and all faiths and all backgrounds, all ethnic.
Madam Chairman, we are stumbling because we are trying to take a very big story.
Tracked it, and I'm so sorry.
No, we are not sorry that we're here, we're in fact excited about being here to invite you. These 10 exemplars will be designated and inducted into the Global Peace Parks.
Oh, I mean.
By Mrs. A.D. King, who is the sister-in-law of Martin Luther King, and by Dr. Babz Onabongo, who is the director of the King Foundation. We are also working with the city staff, Public Works, and Park and Rec to plant 10 peace trees along the riverfront in their honor, and we are working with three dynamic arts organizations, the Susquehanna Art Museum, the Harrisburg Art Association, and Ms. Nancy Mendez, and the Public Libraries to create arts immersion activities in their honor. We're going to end.
Wait, no, I have one more, I forgot somebody, and it's important.
Yes, ma'am.
Homer Floyd, of all people to forget, oh my word, he was first on my list, and because I didn't get back to my list, I forgot him. As many of you know, he was in charge of Pennsylvania Human Relations, and he on his own, the work that he's done through NAACP, Teaching Tolerance, et cetera, in the city of Harrisburg are well-known, but I'm embarrassed to have forgotten his name.
We have 15 seconds, but we are also going to honor an outstanding lady, Mrs. Suzanne Schaefer, Gold Star Mother, who has adopted and taken the stewardship of the Potter's Cemetery. Her daughter is here to say a final word on her behalf.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For those of you who don't know what a Gold Star Mother is, a Gold Star Mother is someone who has lost their son or daughter in service to our fine nation. They can either die in combat, or they can serve, or they can die in what the military considers honorable. And my mom unfortunately became a Gold Star Mother four years ago, and on behalf of her, I will read her statement. "Good evening. Thank you so much for extending the honor to represent women of sacrifice within our community. As a Gold Star Mother, I truly understand freedom is not free and appreciate this committee, Mayor and City Council, for being willing to extend their gratitude, love, and care not only to myself, but to all Gold Star families. However, I think after the events of this past week, I would be remiss in not also acknowledging our law enforcement, fire, and first responder and dispatch community for their service and sacrifices as well. I look forward to meeting all of you in February and hopefully able to dialogue more about this project and to personally be able to thank you all for this great honor. God bless you all for your amazing work, and I look forward to meeting you all real soon. In Gold Star love, always, Suzanne."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. Next, under Communications, we have a presentation for support of Resolution 4 of 2018, Ms. Jane
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening.
Mayor, and thank you so much for having us here tonight and for considering our resolution. And what the resolution says is, we, the city of Harrisburg, believe in fair redistricting. And it has, you don't have to be really reading the newspapers front to back to know that recently the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania has said that the current maps, voter registration maps or districting maps are unconstitutional to the Pennsylvania Constitution, and they have directed the Assembly to redraw those maps, I think by February 9, and have them back to the 15th for approval. And it's, it's huge. It means that we are well on our way where the voters choose their legislators and not the other way around. Harrisburg has been one of the most disenfranchised through gerrymandering, and if you look at the map, they cut out the city of Harrisburg at the last redistricting after the 2010, and the process of that was also mind-boggling. You know, they waited till the last minute, brought it out to the floor, got voted on, and it was signed by Governor Corbett. But anyhow, tonight, we are requesting that Harrisburg City adopt a resolution in support of fair districting, in support of fair, and I want to add this, transparent districting. It's been a battle, we're still fighting, because even though the Supreme Court has said, change the map, what Fair Districts PA that I represent is asking for is a process change, an amendment to the Constitution. There are two bills pending right now, Senate Bill 722, House Bill 22, they are held up in committee and not being released out to the public, out to the floor, public for comments or to the floor for vote. They're a little stubborn on it, we keep working on them, but they have to get out. If we miss our end of legislation deadline, process starts all over again, as with any constitutional amendment. I would like to introduce one hard-working crew here. This is Jean Handley, who is the Dolphin County Coordinator for Fair Districts PA, and Art Florio, who tiresly is getting these resolutions. When Harrisburg, and I'm saying when, not if, when Harrisburg adopts this resolution, approximately 73% of the residents in Dolphin County will be covered by a resolution supporting fair districting in PA. It's a very hard thing to argue with, but be it may, there's stall techniques going on right now, so we'll keep fighting. Thank you very much for considering it, and thank you very much for your time. I can answer any questions. Nothing I like better to do than talk about fair districts, but I think it's, most people are pretty familiar with gerrymandering and the dastardly effects of it, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, Jane, thank you, and we certainly will consider that.
Thank you.
Moving on to courtesy of the floor, anyone who would like to come to the mic, please do so now. I'll start with, to my right.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. I've been out of whack for this winter due to health issues, but I had thought about starting off 2018 the right way.
Can you please identify yourself, sir, excuse me?
I beg your.
Your name and your address, please.
Oh, Ron Johnson, 1847 Zarker Street. I'm the Chair of the Neighborhood Square Watch Group.
Thank you.
And the city's community back in the mid to late 90s, early 2000, were organized, had to organize because of illegal activities which were destroying our communities, so we partnered up with the city to co, to combat these issues. 2008 to 2012, the city came in and shut down whole city blocks to help us eliminate these illegal activities that was overrunning our communities, and we began to feel safe again. 2014 to present, our communities started to spiral backwards because of most properties in our area starting to become investment properties, and folks began to move back into our communities with the same unsafe behaviors that operated in their previous communities. Now, we appreciate everybody helping these small businesses to get started, but right now what we're viewing is illegal pharmaceutical companies being in our communities under the guise of corner stores who are reaping, raping and pillaging our communities instead of enhancing them. We deserve so much better, and our communities are no longer feeling safe again, and I will be getting in contact with the new public chair, so we will become best friends.
All right, have a good day. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, thank you. Anyone else to my right, please?
Good evening, Richard Soto, 1339 South 18th Street of the south side of Harrisburg. I have a couple of questions. One is this, Cornell, we talked a couple of months ago, I'm very disturbed, I had got this mail, a citation from the city inspector. I'm thinking it's a tat, and that's how I'm really looking at it, because when I speak out on some issues, on some things, and you're now a part of a certain team, certain things just start coming up and popping up, and harassment is going across the board, and I experienced this type of thing going down the line. But what I have to say, my property, my home, 1339 South 18th Street, I have a vehicle parked, I know city have an ordinance, we spoke, there's no busted windows, no flat tires, I also use the councilman suggesting, put a cover over it because my car is broke, so you know, I do have more than one vehicle, it's not bought to anyone, it's not on the streets, it's on my property, my driveway, that I pay for my house for. I don't owe a mortgage, I pay my taxes, I don't owe back taxes at all, we can check it, I can show your receipt and everything, but when, my problem is, when the city inspector walk on my property without my permission, that is trespassing, number one. Number two, I called the Penn Doc and I asked them, can my vehicle be on my property if it's not registered, and they say, yes, as long as it's not on the street. Okay, then they scratched a couple of numbers out, $1,000, $500, and the last one was $615. Got this today. But we have abandoned houses in the city of Harrisburg, especially in the south side of Harrisburg, it's not boarded up, and the city inspector want to walk on my property by my vehicle on my property? And kids is getting pulled into these, young ladies getting raped, and I can prove it. Crack houses, using as a drug, illegal activity, but you want to come on my property by my vehicle that I'm trying to fix up? I'm not rich, I don't have a lot of money, I can't fix my car right away, but if you want to give me a donation to fix my car up, to get it up and running, you can do that, it's no problem. But I have an issue with that, the, the, the city inspector, name is Bruce, so I want to know, how can we get this issue fixed? Because it's on my property, and the city ordinance say that I asked Mr. Councilman is about abandoned car. My car is not abandoned, it's not busted windows, there's no flat tires or anything else, the vehicle is just not working, and it's on my property, it's not bought to anyone. You know, but we, we, we have a street that is, the lights don't even work, we have poles, and I've took all the numbers down to the poles and sent it down here, but we still ain't get our lights fixed on our street, but we also got a park down there that be having shootings and all the other crazy stuff with no lights there at all neither. But they want to come and harass me about a car that is broke on my property. I have an issue with that, you know?
Okay, Mr. Soto.
And I've been trying to get some help with this, and the man just acting and ruined ignorant, but how can I press charges on him for trespassing? Because if I trespass on somebody's property, they're going to send me a citation, because I never gave this man permission. You had to literally come all on my property just to be nosy, to do what you did, and then you, and you're welcome to my house, I mean, you ride down there, Mayor, and whoever else you see the car there, and I know you seen what I'm talking about because you knew my driveway, y'all know my house.
Okay, Mr. Soto, we heard, we've heard from you, so now we're going to, if you're wait to the end of the meeting, you want to speak with Ms. Green, and we will.
I definitely appreciate that. Can I, one more thing, and I'm done?
Okay, well, see, we've heard from you, we need to investigate to find out.
Okay, no problem, okay, now I'll give you this, you can have this, please.
Okay.
The other issue is, you know, a lot of money went through, through our city, Midtown, South Allison Hill, Uptown, but when are we really going to get to the south side of Harrisburg on Paxton Street, those businesses that been there for years that want some type of help and some boost to energize our, and property value could go up in the south side of Harrisburg? We have land out there too, while we can't build no apartment buildings and stuff down there because we have a housing projects down there. I mean, we have crime all over the city, it's all over the city. I have an issue about the gun thing and stuff. We don't have gun shops in the city of Harrisburg, but we have a gun show at the farm show, and I know a lot of that is out of y'all control, but it's something to really look at.
Okay.
You know, please. And looking for the jobs in the city of Harrisburg, I'm definitely looking for that. I know during the campaign you said, we're going to look out, the city will be employing people from the city of Harrisburg, but I don't see that, I'm being honest. I see people that don't live in the city of Harrisburg working in the city of Harrisburg. That's all I have to say, thank you for, for your.
You're welcome, Mr. Soto, and please stay.
I'm not trying to be ruined anything.
Please stay and speak with Councilwoman Green after the meeting, please. Thank you. Anyone else to my right, please? Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left? Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session, minutes of January 9, 2018. Council members, any omissions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, minutes will stand as approved. Report to committee, report from Chair Madsen on the work session of January 16, 2019.
Yes.
Mr. Madsen, are you ready with your report?
I am.
Thank you, sir.
We discussed Resolution 1 to 2018 and Resolution 2, 2018. I think both resolutions would bring some much-needed development to downtown area. We discussed a number of things, but the highlights to me are when we're doing these projects, I really want to make sure that residents get an opportunity for any jobs opportunities that may come with these projects, and then when we're bringing in development to the city, we do have a high demand for affordable housing, so I think moving forward when having these discussions, we'll want to see if with these projects, we could have one or two units that are a little bit more affordable for our lower-income folks, so. But with that, I recommend that we vote on the resolutions and that I would recommend my colleagues support it.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Chair Madsen. Moving on to Chair Allott, on the report, a work session of January 16, 2018. Are you ready with your report?
Yes, ma'am. So, update on work session covering community business and budget finance. We had up for discussion Resolution 5, 2018. It is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into software subscription agreement to secure it to upgrade existing accounting software utilized for essential financial operations for the city. You will get no argument from me to offer my support for this legislation because our accounting software is badly in need of this migration and the update associated with it. This will be a very necessary thing going forward, and it's probably the beginning of a longer phase of updates and migrations that our accounting system needs to go through, but this is certainly a step in the right direction, so I would recommend this passage by my colleagues.
Thank you, Chair Allott. Moving on to ordinance for first reading, we have none this evening. Ordinance for amendment, we have none as well. Ordinance for final passage, we have none. We move on to resolutions, Resolution 1, 2018. Mr. Petrowski, please read it into record.
Resolution 1 of 2018 was moved by Mr. Madsen, seconded by Mr. Allott. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Brad Jones, President of South Second Associates LLC, to convert the properties at 17 South Second Street and 21 South Second Street into a mixed-use project.
Any questions or comments, council members?
I got it, yeah.
All right, go ahead, Mr..
One, one thing I want to point out, I know Councilman Madsen kind of pointed out inside his report in regards to the different projects that are taking place by Harris Town. As everyone knows, I've been, you know, standing on my soapbox about MBE participation and just do some research. It was at one point in time, the city had, back in 1220, 1223 or 2003, passed the ordinance, which is in Chapter 2, not 903, which was called the Affirmative Action Cooperation Plan. And during that time, kind of give everyone an idea of what that is, during that time, basically, they got cooperative parties to come together, and these parties were the Harrisburg Rede, Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, Harris Town Development Corporation, the Harrisburg Authority, which we all know is CRW, Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District Authority, which is known as the DID, Harrisburg Housing Authority, Harrisburg Leasing Authority, which I don't think. which I don't think is around anymore, Harrisburg Parking Authority, to basically come into a cooperation plan of setting goals for minority businesses and disadvantaged business opportunities. So, I know I've been talking about, about some type of plan that the city should have, and more of a legislation piece to it, and that piece is currently in place. But, you know, just reading through the ordinance, there's a lot of things that need to be updated with, updated with this ordinance, but I think it gives us a foundation to kind of move forward. And I think it's an opportunity to kind of point this out, because I think Harris Town, hopefully, will continue to be a partner with this, because as we know, there are the central, centralized units that's doing most of the development downtown. So I want to just point out to my council members that, you know, the mechanism, you know, for creating more minority businesses and disadvantaged business opportunities within these contracts does exist, and it is an ordinance. So I think it's something that we can open up and look to tap into our different partners, and revise in this ordinance, where as these different plans are taking place, that we have more of a policy and ordinance direction, rather than just, just speaking, hoping, wishing that these things are going to happen, but actually putting action towards it. So I just wanted to point that out, just for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to, I have a statement that I'd like to make. It's not a comment, but a statement. And this is no reference to anyone personally. This is to all the developers that come into the city. And the statement is, when I committed myself to being a public servant, it was with the commitment to being fair, honest, transparent, and a voice to advocate for all residents. As a lifelong resident of the city of Harrisburg, there have been many positive changes for all of the people who reside in the city, and other changes have been self-beneficial to some of us. Lately, there has been continuous legislation over the past two years that has come before this council regarding development in the downtown area. This appears to be a form of gentrification to me, which is a process of renovating deteriorating urban neighborhoods and downtowns by means of bringing more affluent residents into the areas, and changing the district's character, and certainly its culture. My opinion may offend some people. Certainly, this is not my intent, and I apologize if you're offended, but I'm going to be very vocal about this, and very passionate. I'm very much in favor of developers investing in Harrisburg, but unless we change the practices of how we develop our city, and have accessible and affordable housing for everyone, and I'm talking about your cashiers, I'm talking about your clerks, I'm talking about your janitors, who work in the downtown bars and restaurants, and might want to live in the housing areas. But until we do that, within any neighborhood of this city, we have not done our job for our residents. I'm going to work with the administration developers to make this happen, but I will also be watchful in the pursuit to assure that all persons are treated equal regarding their housing options, where they want to live, and how they want to live. Most of the downtown areas are old buildings that are being renovated for high upscale. I want them renovated for those who work at lower-paying jobs. And I also know that there are ordinance intues to help guide attainable and appropriate housing in every neighborhood, and I certainly will be the watchdog. Is any other questions or comments?
I have another question. I was, I guess, I guess the, I guess the only challenge would be, I don't know what ordinance we have in place to kind of, you know, to, you know, whether, you know, certain communities have certain set-asides for affordable housing, so I'm not sure if we have that within our ordinance. So maybe, you know, if that's a, you know, we have to be more than just watchdogs. I mean, we've been watching for a long time, but I think there's a way to kind of develop real ordinance and real changes to actually, actually create what we want to see. Because if there's no, there's no guidelines, there's no type of, whether, you know, people have done it through different incentives, people have done it through mandatory requirements, if there's no, there's nothing that's out there that exists, everything's going to continue to be the same.
And we will-
So I think, so I think a lot of that burden has to be, you know, driven by us through conversations with the administration, through different developers, to make sure we're doing it in a way that's productive, but also allows for affordable housing opportunity for everyone in each district of the city. But I don't think there's nothing in place as far as our ordinance that kind of protects for that, for us to kind of be a watchdog for what's there.
Well, going to be a watchdog, and also going to look at all the ordinances, as one of the goals that I have set for us is to go through all the ordinances and update those ordinances, as I indicated in the work session last week. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Calling the vote for Resolution One of 2018. Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution One passes.
Resolution Two, 2018, Mr. Petrowski.
Resolution Two of 2018 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Mr. Allitt, so resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Brad Jones, President of Harris Town Enterprises, to convert an existing office building into a twelve-unit mixed-use building.
Any questions or comments on Resolution Two, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Two passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Four, 2018.
Resolution Four of 2018 was moved by Mr. Johnson, seconded by Mr. Allitt, so resolution in support of a constitutional mandate to create and empower a nonpartisan citizens' commission for legislative redistricting and congressional proportionment.
Any questions or comments?
Just comment, please.
Yes, Mr. Allitt?
The Fair Districts program in this resolution, I think, is really important for us to, to consider and to promote in terms of the importance of kind of one voice, one vote in our, in our country. And what's happened as a result of extreme gerrymandering over time is giving favor to one party or another. And quite honestly, depending on what state you live in, it may affect one of the Democratic Party, the Republican Party, one or the other. And I think what's really important to note is that this is a nonpartisan issue in my mind, because if you truly hold out the belief of one voice, one vote, you want that vote to count, and you want everyone to have that opportunity to be able to make their voice heard. And if there's anything that I feel has really led to voter disenfranchisement, and, and voters feeling very concerned about whether or not their vote matters, it's this issue. And I think that, for us in our community, as Jane pointed out, you know, we have three congressional districts in Dolphin County, and guess what, we're not even the worst in the state. Montgomery County has five congressional districts that serve it. These are really serious issues that we need to look at, and make sure that we are given access to people to have that opportunity to vote. So I really wanted to put that out there, I think this is a very important concept. It is a nonpartisan issue. I think as Americans, if we believe in the right to vote, we need to support this type of effort going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Allitt. Anyone else? Please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Four passes.
Moving on to Resolution Five, 2018.
Resolution Five of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Mattson. It's a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and turn into a software subscription agreement with Spireon LLC to upgrade existing accounting software utilized for essential financial operations of the city.
Any questions or comments, council members? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allitt?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Five passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Eight.
Resolution Eight of 2018, just, for the record, this was formerly, there was formerly a resolution that was withdrawn by the administration, so this is the new Resolution Eight of 2018 to be put on the record.
Okay.
Resolution, this Resolution Eight of 2018 is a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Brad Jones, President of Harris Town Enterprises, to convert existing vacant office space into thirteen apartment units.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Resolution Nine, 2018.
Resolution Nine of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Trout, Eversol, and Groff LLC CPAs and business advisors to conduct in reconciliation of the compensated absences liability in neighborhood fund receivable accounts.
Will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution Ten.
Resolution Ten of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Mary Dusel, certified public accountants, to audit the city's annual audit and financial report for the year ended December 31, 2017.
That also will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution Eleven.
Resolution Eleven of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution appointing Ms. Shannon Gordy to serve on the zoning hearing board for the city of Harrisburg.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution Twelve of 2018.
Resolution Twelve of 2018 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allitt. It's a resolution appointing Judd Pittman to serve on the Lurda Fields Board.
That also will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution Thirteen.
Resolution Thirteen of 2018 was moved by Mr. Allitt, seconded by Ms. Williams. It's a resolution approving the first proposed 2018 budget allocations in order to reclassify certain allocations and authorize the roll forward of certain 2017 budget year commitments.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution Fourteen.
Resolution Fourteen of 2018 was moved by Mr. Mattson, seconded by Ms. Green. It's a resolution approving the preliminary final subdivision and land development plan submitted by Scott Dunwoody on behalf of Bethesda Mission to renovate and expand the existing Bethesda Mission Community Center located at 1438 Hur Street.
That will be placed in Community and Economic Development Committee. Moving on to O Business, community members, I mean, community, ah, council members, ah. O Business council members, are there any O Business at this time? Okay. Moving on to New Business, council members, are there any New Business at this time? Okay. Have a move, motion for Jeremy?
Some move.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.